Corporate citizens who approved it. And the second one is the, when we're looking at these ta- uh tables of like. Uh they refer to this. The tax evasion schedule under section twelve dash sixty five H. Does manufacturing facility. So I think that's the one that applies to personal property.
Informational piece.
Okay, I remember seeing it.
Yeah, so I don't know whether they can, if they're not considered manufacturing, if they can take off. Personal property. The first section. And as you have the assessment on the building definitely why not.
And the assessor is part of the process at their level.
So those are the, I mean, I don't mind referring, I just, those are, those are two.
So you know, too wicked Bobby Fanderelet didn't email me the sack and he can give me a couple of other highlights as to what's going on with the business. Um he has hired two new people, two more people, and he's going to actually be hiring some Amity students during their work study program. And also as some summer help. And uh they still have to finish landscaping along Route sixty three. So that's uh still in in the works. And they will actually, according to this, be having their grand opening, uh open house on March seventh and eighth. So something I'm sure that uh. Like to attend. To see how things are going, but uh. Do we, uh can I, so we can continue the conversation, can I have a motion to move this forward to Board of Finance?
Need to refer this to the uh, well, the tax incentive program review committee. The Board of Finance.
Right, and the assessor, okay, I will second that. Um any other comments or questions, I think all the paper was provided, so we have everything there. And then certainly the Board of Finance will do a further. Deep dive into it and and then bounce it back to us with their recommendations or their decision. Sharon, you look like you have a question.
No, not about that one, about items three and four and.
Oh, okay, all right, we'll get there in a second.
I I have something under four that will not be allowed under three.
Okay, uh uh, okay, well, we'll have to. Well, we're trying to put some guidelines in place so that we can have a nice process.
I understand that.
So, um, all right, but getting back to this one, uh, any other comments, Bob, or questions? All in paper? Okay, unanimous, we will send that forward to the Board of Finance. And uh we'll have it on your agenda for our next week. Uh now we have item number three, which is uh some guidelines and potential policy for. Public comment because we've we've had some issues, I know other municipalities have the same issues and uh. They uh, I believe we've talked to many of them and and Madison was one town that actually. Has uh put this guideline and policy thing together and I just sort of changed Madison for Bethany and. Sort of, you know, uh made sure that it was relevant to us and not necessarily Madison, but uh. Everybody had hopefully time to to review it and. I mean, it's pretty straightforward, just decorum and and so forth and.
Yeah, I like it, I like that it's just guidelines so that you're not locked into, it's just uh, there's some flexibility. Under item one, it says um. So uh, public comments for regular meetings but not special meetings. And then the comments at the beginning may be limited to items on the agenda. Um and I. I I know that sometimes we have a special meeting because it was a holiday or. Now say Gina and I were both sick. So it's essentially the entire um. I don't think it needs to go in there, but like essentially it would be the regular meeting, but it would be a special meeting. We have to authorize you to sign something, we have a meeting at eight thirty, we fully plan to be in our cars on the way to work at three thirty one. Not really when we want to hear people speaking on.
I'm sure it would. Be based off of the nature of the meeting and what the items are.
Maybe we can have it somehow, so it it's, it doesn't have to be a special meetings, but it could be.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And then, I had a, and then uh. Yeah, but the only other thing is if um, if we do allow. Things that are not on the agenda, in other words, somebody brings something to our attention, you know, bring a complaint in or something like that. It has to be something within our jurisdiction, otherwise we're kind of.
Right, and usually public comment is really not a conversation, it's people to address items to us. Um unless we feel it warrants some kind of clarification.
Sometimes the answer is simple, that'll be, that'll be.
Yeah, right, we will look into it and and so forth, um but usually it is just straight. Public comment, so.
Minutes speakers will be limited to one comment per topic. Does that mean like one comment for agenda item or um? Or one topic? I won't quite sure what that meant.
Let's see if there'd be a little confusion.
So if I got three minutes, could I spend? You know, a minute on one thing and two minutes on another item and I still only have three minutes.
Or or three minutes on each.
Right, I mean, the way it reads, it's comments should be limited to three minutes per speaker, uh, you know. And it takes one comment per to- topic until everyone else has spoken, so and then you can go again if it permitted, right? Right, so uh. The way, the way I read this, and again, this was just something that another town has done, is. The public will have a right to speak on every agenda item. Right, so if you have nine agenda items, then they get to speak nine times, right? Because then you have input on every single one, yeah, right? Okay, so I mean, it's guidelines that I would expect as we, if the minutes are practiced, there's two levels.
Right, I mean, but unless we put something in place, we're not going to know if there's any adjustment needed until you go through it. Sharon, you look perfect.
Well, yes, um, my concern is, it actually is that. You don't limit public comment to only what's on the agenda because one of the. Um, one of the benefits of public comment is. That people bring things to our attention and at a regular meeting, we can add them to the agenda if we need to deal with them.
I mean, it says may, doesn't say shall, so there's, there's that.
Sort of implies that, but uh, I just wanted to say that it's especially like in finance, if people come in to talk to us. It's usually something we need to know about, even if it wasn't on our agenda, so I just want to make sure we're. Not planning to discourage.
So like I said, I'll be spacing this off, but you know, we will see how it flows. And then if there needs to be any revisions or adjustments, make sure we can do that accordingly. Um and the other part of it was the policy because we had, um, you, you want to vote on them separately or do you want to vote?
Yeah, this is just, this is just us.
Um, all right, so can I have a motion to approve the guidelines?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, no, I I I'm just curious, and it's a question for Vin, um, on item number four. Would this be, would this be? I guess the best, the easiest way to ask the question would be in reference to the town meeting that we had last week. So if there's fifteen people that want to speak, they all get to speak. But what if some, say, the person that spoke second has something else, he has to wait until all fifteen speak. And he can't go at number seven, is that what you're saying?
Right, that's.
That, 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 I'm just try, I'm just trying to make sure I unders, I understand the context.
Until all other attendees have a chance to speak, so, right? So then the chair may allow for additional comments after everyone, so whether he get, I don't know why it has to be a he. The resident, so the resident would be able to go a second time, I believe there were every this at the discretion. Of the chair, so it says the chair may allow for additional comments after everyone else has had an opportunity. But the way I also read this is, you have cu- public comment at the beginning. So that is, uh, you could discuss anything within the jurisdiction of the body, right? I think that's, that might be something that you might want to add, I think that was a good comment by Bob. And then, as you're going through the agenda, you know, if, and if you, if this is not the way it's intended, then it should be clarified. As you're going through the agenda, uh, the public would have an opportunity to speak on each agenda item. Right, because. Right, because it's, speakers will be limited to one comment per topic, well. Are you gonna have them sit, do that at the beginning, or are you gonna have them do that as you're addressing it one at a time? So I know like, for example, in in Orange, uh, that's the way they they do it, where the public. Gets to talk as the agenda items advance, so you know, the board discusses it, then you know, the first selectman asks. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this matter? And then anyone has a comment can get up and speak. So if that's the way it's intended, I mean, that's the way I'm reading it. But if that's not the way it's intended, then you should uh clarify that. That all comments need to be made during the public comment section.
It's important to say this does not apply to a town meeting, it just says regular meetings.
This is only for the selectmen. Guidelines here. No, the first one. Right, so, public comments are permitted at the beginning. And. You know, do you want to limit it? Or not, uh? What what's the intention? Is it the intention to keep all the public comments at the beginning or to have them addressed?
No, at 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 the beginning of the meeting during the public comment on the.
Then uh.
During public comment? Opportunity to be heard during public comment, after everyone has had an opportunity to be heard during public comment?
Yeah, you know, uh. Or or uh, you might over it up, uh. You know, maybe at the, at the end, the the following uh, the 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 following guidelines are for. Uh, com- public, the public's comment. During the the public comment.
Well, the comments at the beginning may be limited, may be limited to items up. I didn't, I didn't want this to to be overthought here. Beginning of the agenda for all regularly scheduled Board of Selectment meetings. Public comments are permitted near the beginning. Of. Should I say as noted on the agenda? Near the beginning of the.
Oh, uh, all right, so public comments are permitted near the beginning of the agenda for all regularly scheduled Board of Selectment meetings. To, maybe to address.
Well, it's just public comment, we're not.
Right, but you're, but then you're saying in four that they're limited to one comment per topic. So it's to address items on the agenda? We could change forward to say limited to one comment and eliminate the per topic. Well, right, because theoretically, theoretically, if you have nine, if you have nine topics. And they're permitted to talk on each topic, then does that mean I get nine to twenty seven minutes?
So so taking out per topic, this makes it a little.
You're right, so you have three minutes, you get three minutes, and after everyone else has had a chance, you could have three minutes again, if you want to.
Will be limited to one comment. Until all other attendees have had a chance to speak.
I got suggestions on number one.
Number one?
Public comments are permitted near the beginning of the agenda. Uh for all regularly scheduled Board of Selectments meeting, then parentheses right now says excluding special meetings. Maybe it's strike excluding and put in, and may be permitted at special meetings.
So that means you're excluding it?
No, you're saying all regular meetings, you'll have public comments on the agenda, and you may also put them on special new agendas. And it will probably depend on whether it's a quick thing or it's effectively a regular meeting.
And maybe, and maybe part of. Special meetings, maybe part of. Part of special.
And then the, the last line, comments at the beginning may be limited to items on, on the noticed agenda. And then something, add something to that, like, and must be within the jurisdiction of the board, like that.
Under the, and 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 should be under the jurisdiction of the board.
Just to, you know.
Clarify.
If you're coming in to talk about war in Ukraine or something, it's that we can't, we can't do anything.
Sure, yeah, yeah, okay, so we'll um, uh, may be limited to items on the noticed agenda and should be under the. Fall under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectment. And should. Falls under the jurisdiction of the Board of Select, okay, we'll make that change.
And I think though, and then before taking out.
May be limited to one comment until all other attendees have had a chance to speak.
And then if we run into problems with it, we'll edit it.
Adjusted as as needed, yeah, I, but I think we we are at least, we have something to start with. So, okay, um, a motion to approve as amended. And I will second that, any other comments or questions on the guidelines?
This is just for the Board of Selectmen.
Just for the Board of Select meetings. All in favor? Okay, we will make those adjustments and those will fall into place. Now we have the uh policy that sort of pertains to meetings.
And I had a suggestion, I missed it, the one, the policy should be substituted, guidelines should be substituted. The policy sounds much more official, directive, and guidelines are just uh, and then when you read the text of it. It's encouraging boards to have public comment, but they don't have to, so really is one suggestion. Although it opens up, it opens up that the policy is to provide guidelines.
Yeah, the first line.
The guidelines? Yeah, the purpose of of this B O S policy is to provide guidelines.
So that's, so this is basically the guidelines.
Well, yeah, it's just the policy sounds more. Sounds more mandatory, like policy with. Like, like, right.
So, what could be another word?
Well, I think you could do guidelines substitute, and then you'd have to reword the first one. The purpose of those Board of Selectmen guidelines is to facilitate public comment periods, you know. Yeah, which is still when you say guidelines twice.
All right, so, so this is going to be guidelines, that's going to be guidelines. And then the purpose of this Board of Selection guide.
That's the purpose of these. Yeah, I'll have to take a little bit of the.
Board of Selecting guidelines is to provide.
To facilitate public comment periods during all meetings.
During all four times, okay.
And then, the only other comment I had on the, on the whole thing was. I guess you're in the third line of number one, it says town meetings, public hearings, public information sessions. And then under item four, it says public decorum at town meetings. And then, but once you get under it, it says individual, it talks all about B C C, which is their abbreviation for boards. Committees and commissions, and those are defined as, uh, defined by, so. It's, it's town meetings with a small t and a small m, not the town meeting, because it, this stuff doesn't make sense for that.
Right.
So because like, the whole town meeting is public comment.
All right, so that should be a small m for meeting there.
Uh either that or just take, take the town meetings out of it because it's going to be confusing and just. Have B C C meetings, right.
So public decorum at B C C meetings.
Yeah, or like, number three, it just refers to meetings, we could. It's just confusing because town meeting has multiple meanings. And then the first one, I, I, the town meetings.
Where are you looking at?
Uh, the first paragraph, it says as well as town meetings, and when you capitalize it, it's going to imply.
The town meeting, right.
I'm not even sure if we need the, the list of public hearings and public information sessions. But we could put it in there. So either it should be not capitalized or the town should be deleted in front of it.
Okay, okay.
Or we already have B C C meetings, we could just strike town meetings, so it's as well as public hearings and public information sessions. Because those could be things that like the Department of Transportation puts on them, they call theirs public information, and they would not be.
Well, a town meeting is not a board, it's not really a board commission, right?
No, no, and then when you read under, under it, they're definitely not talking about the legislative body town meeting.
Okay, okay. Although depending on your preference.
I mean, you could avoid future ambiguity by putting in a sentence that says this shall not apply to. The town meeting or special town meetings, uh, the comma, parentheses, the legislative authority of the town. You know, so there's no confusion that it doesn't apply. But there's no confusion that it does apply.
All right, so we'll get that sentence in at the end of the first paragraph.
Yeah.
Put it together and then I'll let it in, okay. All right, and so anywhere where it's talking about a portion of a meeting, I will lowercase the m. Right, because in many instances here it says, it's the meeting, the word meeting is capitalized, so there's no reason to really have.
Right, it's not a proper noun.
No, no, it's not the parentheses specific meeting, it's just saying a meeting or, yeah. So any reference there with the capital M, I will lowercase it. Do that. Any other comments or questions?
Do you think it's uh, it's okay to pass as is, or should you rewrite it?
As amended with the changes we we've made, yeah, we can include it and then we'll just make this uh. Okay. All righty, um, so motion to approve as amended with these corrections, some revisions. Um, I will second, any other comments or questions? We will make those corrections and move on, now we actually get to public comment. So, um, Jamie, are you the first one to sign up or? Okay, and our minutes per is actually taking minutes virtually, so if you could just state your name and address, even though you're writing it on the piece of papers. Would be great.
Yep, uh, Illinois, James Sterling. Uh, Twenty Mill Road. Thank you all for serving, sorry to see Gina's not here tonight, but. Uh, my comments are on item number three, public comment, and item number twelve, uh, the town code revisions. I recognize the uh board's authority to set policies around public comment, it makes perfect sense, every board does that. Um, and I also would like to just comment on the may limit topics to items on the agenda. I would note that uh, up until a year ago, that was rarely enforced, while it's always been a. Policy that I think has been allowed, um, recently, it seems we've limited topics to items on the agenda more frequently than we did in the previous years. And I would caution the board and particularly the chair, that limiting that, becoming, that becoming a habit. Uh, may be perceived as um, non-transparent or not listening, and so. While I think many of us recognize the authority to do that, don't think it's a good idea to make it a habit every meeting. Uh, secondly, on item twelve, which is possible action on the town code changes. Uh, I would suggest tabling this for a month or two, to allow the residents to review it. I know that I'm pretty well informed in town and I only reviewed it tonight and looking at the meeting packet, um, there were a couple of items in there that. You know, just jumped out at me, and I suppose if I had put more time in an hour to read through it, more would come out. Uh, but on page thirty four of our packet, uh, section fifty four two. Um, where we're shifting the town officers committee meeting to every two years instead of every year. That feels like also less listening, I know these meetings may be pro forma and not well. Thought about by the town, but we are trying to in include our town residents more in. Meetings, it's, you see by the number of people who come out to town meetings over the last couple of years has really grown, think that's a good thing. So, um, since the, the meeting is to develop consistent long-range policies, and I quote from uh, the meeting. Purpose, um, I think that having it every year is still a good idea. And then finally, on on page thirty nine, section one oh two dash three. Uh, I'm not sure which section says no alarm system shall be installed by other than a licensed person. New alarm systems can be installed with um. Uh, taping to the win, you know, to the windows and doors, and they're all Bluetooths accessible. The need for a licensed professional to do that, unless you want, this is the full employment for Licensed Alarm Specialist Act. Um, I think that things like that probably could be removed, many homeowners might install their own system. The penalties for false alarms would still apply. So I would conclude by saying, um, I think we should table those for a few months, maybe put it in the bulletin to let people know it's there and read it, not. Whole thing, but a link.
I don't see any hands up on your phone.
I think I'm next.
Oh, did you sign it on the sheet? I didn't see the pad, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't see the pad.
All right, so, um, Sharon Huxley, three forty Old Mill Road. Um, first comments on the, uh, what you just. What you just passed, um. I, I think it's important to actually allow for all. For input on all topics, not may, but will allow. Uh, because as I had said before, what happens is people may bring. Things that are not on the agenda to your attention, and they can't do that if they're limited, if you have decided to limit it only to. Agenda items, so I think that that should be changed, um, in the. In the policies regarding the public meetings, uh, first of all, I think there are statutory. Um, requirements concerning public hearings related to different bodies. And that they may be different from what you have here, I think that that's actually quite possible. And, um, and therefore that I would suggest running this whole. Policy regarding public comment during public meetings by all of the boards and commissions to make sure that. It's, first of all, they're aware of it, if it's going to change their past practices, because this is very different. Certainly from what Land use commission, stew, boards.
I mean, again, the way it was passed, guidelines, non-binding, but so, yeah, definitely, because I can see like a land use. Mission that had to have whole public hearings, they closed the public hearings, then the next meeting deliberately, this tells them you have to listen to public comment. Which you shouldn't be.
Which you can't do.
On that topic. Want to make sure, this, I believe, only refers to public. Meetings, a public hearing is a horse of a different color.
Um, yes, but this refers to public hearings also. And and therefore, I think that it should be reviewed against. By, by the individual boards and commissions to see. You know, based on, first of all, their, their current practices, and second, what they know to be their statutory requirements. Um, the, the other thing I wanted to mention is in the town code. And I wrote it down instead of picking which page it was and. Where'd it go? I'm trying to figure out where it is, it's on. I wrote it down. Okay, and it must be in, in up there. That's not good. All right, um, oh, yes, the town officers meeting. Isn't that a statutory requirement that it be held annually?
I think it's just, I think it's an ordinance.
I mean, the fact that we don't do it doesn't mean that we're not supposed to.
It's, it's in the ordinance.
Okay, but isn't the ordinance conforming with statute?
Well, it's, it's at least binding, I mean, the ordinance is, you'd have to modify the ordinance. I don't think there's a statute, if we didn't have the ordinance, I think the town of Bethany made up this thing called the, a town officers meeting. Right, and I'm unaware of a statutory requirement, but, but you'd have to change the ordinance in order to know. Yeah, it was, it was passed in nineteen fifty six, so. Much, much smaller groups of people, fewer boards and.
Well, it's town officers and those are, those used to be really excellent. those used to be really excellent meetings for uh dissemination of information and discussion uh because of all the different boards and commissions that come at things from different perspectives and I well, honestly, I think we should be having more of those meetings, not allowing ourselves to have fewer of them. And that's the end of my comments. Thank you. And so.
And if you could just make sure your name and address are on.
It is, it is, okay. Um so I'm here, I I hate to be here, honestly. I feel like I am at my woods end as far as the zoning enforcement officer to a point that she has she has lied several occasions to the commission of the zoning, the zoning commission. It to it's it's a long story and I and I'm not going to draft like, you know, just bring everything out, but I am going to say this. She doesn't know the regulations in the town. From day one, I had a fence, an eight-foot fence put up on the side of my property. She came to investigate it. She said, well, it looks about seven feet. As long as it's seven feet, the building inspector will say it's okay. Like, okay, well, it's over seventy feet, number one. I didn't know the regulation at the time. Okay? She came, she she told she sent a violation that said that it was over seven feet and 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 that they needed to file for a permit. I then and I get an email that says that she has checked with the building inspector. Okay? Three, three months later, nothing was done. The zoning, I I called the building inspector to be told didn't know one thing about it, not one thing about the fence, hadn't heard about it, hadn't heard about the situation. He came in person, saw the fence, said it was it was not to permit, that it needed a permit and it needed its own. So not only need building, but it needed zone. I then get an email from Lena after I asked her what's going on that said uh well, actually two, this one, this one said, uh this one was in September twenty-three. This has been going on since July twenty-two. It said, as previously discussed and was raised again by the first selectman after reviewing the regulations again on fence requirements, I find that the zoning regulations are silent regarding height, placement, or fence design. She says, however, there's building code requirements regarding fencing, which must be addressed by the building official, which is why Brian was notified that he can take whatever action necessary regarding your concern. This is the zoning enforcement officer telling me there are no regulations regarding fences in our town. I'm not the only person in town that is dealing with fence issues, tarp issues, and it's we're taxpayers and we're being ignored, we're being spoken to condescendingly. She has then is fine after going back and forth with her, not only I I'm talking at least thirty emails. I asked her what the zoning board, I asked her what the definition of fences was. I got back the response that the town council advised advised that if I want to change the regulation, it was going to be five hundred dollars to get an amendment.
That's your three minutes, I'm sorry.
I I didn't know that. I only have three minutes. I wasn't aware.
That's what we were discussing.
Want to grant you any time?
I'll I'll grant you a little bit, but could you just repeat your name and address, because our our meeting?
Catherine Shaw, two, three, four, Beckmore Road. Um, okay, so I won't go into anymore. I didn't realize I was on a short time. However, finally, the zoning board did file a cease and desist for this fence. This is the fence. I have a forty-foot, one hundred and one-inch-high temporary tarp fence on my property. Okay, I look at this every day. It's in my backyard. It starts from the middle and it goes all the way down for about forty-eight feet and then it goes to about an eight-foot tarp fence. I have the green monster in my backyard. I have done everything by the book. I've gone to every zoning meeting, zoning board, every zoning meeting I could. The zoning board did say this was not legal, that it was a zoning violation and filed a cease and desist. I asked what the status of the cease and desist was that was supposed to be in place November of twenty twenty-three. And I got back a letter from Lena, the zoning enforcement officer that says, upon my further review and investigation, I do not consider your complaint to be a matter of zoning violation or concern. Since you have failed to exhaust your administrative remedies, I am closing my file and considering this matter closed. Now, what I ask you is how is it that the zoning commission can determine something and have actual evidence, determine it, we have elected them to to do their job, which they did, and the zoning enforcement officer takes it upon herself to just throw out, throw out their decision, completely throw it out. And I know I've copied Paula on almost every single one of these emails. I have gone back and forth just trying to get a zoning code enforced. That's it. I don't care about any other BS, lies, uh talk about any ridiculous thing that I've heard. All I'm talking about is the zoning code. This is definitely not to cope. And for her to lie again in another letter and say that she did a review and investigated, it's just, it's uh it's unimpro, it's inappropriate.
What did you say the fence height was?
I'm sorry, uh it's a hundred and one inches in the middle. And that goes for about, if you look at the poles, it's I'd say they're probably eight feet in between each and it goes a little farther. And there's like this wood behind it and then in the front she has flags above the seven feet. She's got three of those, so yeah, I mean, all I want is for the town to enforce the code.
Okay, we do have someone with a hand raised. If AGC could give their name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, yes, uh this is Amy Gallagher Conway, nine thirty-eight Litchfield Turnpike.
Thank you.
Um my my comment is in regards to the public comment, um and I I would say it probably goes to show, just as this lady has just before me spoken, um limiting public comment to certain items on an agenda um prevent the town from being able to have knowledge to other things that maybe they wouldn't otherwise. Um, I do not believe limiting public comment um is beneficial for anybody in the town, um regardless of what the topic is. They should have the ability to be able to speak. Um, you know, I don't think they should be able to speak for twenty minutes, but just as the example for the lady just before me, she deserved more than three minutes to be able to speak about what sounds like a pretty important issue that she's been having issues with for quite some time. Um, I do not believe public comment should be limited. I don't believe it should not be allowed um at town meetings or special meetings. It just feels like you're taking away our time to be able to speak. And that that's really all I have to say and, you know, I I just don't think that public comment should be limited or not available at these meetings.
Okay, thank you. And don't forget, your hand is still raised if you want to.
Yep.
Lower that, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? I do not see any, so we can close public comment now and move on to approving minutes. So we have a series of minutes here. Um can I get a motion to approve the August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four special meetings?
Yeah, can we approve them if um some of these are the ones that you didn't attend? When you put in Gina's not here?
No, so we'll have to postpone those, okay.
And now, and the only time that I have is under executive session, there's just this filling here. It's this rat retainer instead of draft or kind of.
Let me get there. Which item was it on?
Uh oh, sorry, that's that's the fifteen, October fifteenth point.
Oh, you're on draft, you didn't get there yet, okay.
That was, sorry, I didn't have anything on the twenty-eighth, but
Okay.
That's one of the ones that um we only two selectmen at, and I've done it in here tonight.
Right, so we will postpone August twenty-eighth. We have October eighth, which I was asking for that one too, so we will we will postpone October eighth. You said October fifteenth was the one you had a correction?
Yeah, just uh.
Oh, I see a draft, okay, right there, okay. We will fix that and then we will uh move that forward to um.
Same thing, right?
Yep, we will move that forward to the next meeting, so that one is. And the other two, I believe, we should be able to smooth um because we will both at those things. Yes. So uh we are postponing the three sets of minutes, first three sets, and then January seventh, can I get a motion to approve those?
I'm moved.
Uh say any comments, questions, or corrections on those? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so those are approved. Uh special meeting for January fourteenth, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any comments, questions, or corrections on those?
No.
Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, approved. Now, I did provide you with a list of the tax uh refunds, which is right here. Um we do have twelve tax refunds for a total of four thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. Can I get a motion to approve the tax refunds as presented?
I'm moved.
And I will second. Any comments or questions on those?
These look like they're all based on dollar amounts, probably all vehicles.
Right, right, yeah. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, approved, perfect. Uh we have cemetery deeds, we have four of them. Uh Catherine, uh yeah, Catherine Cole, grave number five in row B, area D. Uh Denise McAllen, grave eleven in row F of section C. Margaret Otzel, grave ten in row F of section C, and William and Kimberly Britton, graves five and six in lot sixty-two of section C. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
I will second. Any comments or questions?
I don't know, my younger brother's buying a gravestone.
Again, when I saw that one, I was like, ooh, um, but yeah.
Most people wait a little longer to worry about that stuff.
But all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh Simpson, we're we're kind of in the home stretch with an update?
Yes, um we are, I'm just gonna do that. I'm I'm hoping uh I'm hoping within the next sixty days to be closing, but I'm waiting on the grant agreement from the state and then once we get the grant agreement, we'll have it signed. Then when we return it, it's I believe it takes thirty days to fund from that point. So this, I'm gonna say within forty-five days of receiving the grant agreement, we should be in a position to close. Uh attorney Nichols, though, uh leaves the area, uh I don't want to call him a snowbird, but uh he goes out of town for a period, for the winter, for a period of time and comes back in the spring. So if we can't close immediately before he leaves, uh we'll try to close immediately upon his return.
Are they willing to grant a further extension? Because I I know we have a non-refundable deposit.
Yes, 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 we are. Uh we we are targeting to try to close before he leaves, but that's going to be dependent upon the state's funding.
So I wouldn't hold mine back?
No, we're trying.
Okay. Um, next item, we've had a request from the Bethany Nursery Group uh for a waiver, a waiver, a waiver of the rental fee um for the Town Hall Gym for their fundraiser. And in the past, we have done that, but they they do understand that they would have to pay for any custodial um coverage.
If it's at a time when they're.
Right, yeah, it's on a weekend, it's on a weekend, so they would they would pay for any uh.
Our policy in the past is for local nonprofit to waive it.
So can I get a motion to approve this request to waive? And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so I will let them know that that is approved and then we will work with them as far as the custodial uh coverage, but that's what we'll do. So uh next item to consider and establish, and your brother sent it to me and do I have it? Do I have it? Did he send it to you?
Yeah. I had it here, but hopefully to this computer, to your computer.
This is something that I guess they it's been done in the past, but we just kind of need it on the books with our sort of stamp of approval. So it's on record, but this this is what they've been doing is when people get their um names added to the memorial down at Beth's Park, there's a procedure that they have. And so we want to sort of memorialize that on record. Did you find it?
I'm forwarding to you.
Well, I can't pull it up on here right now, but.
Oh, you can't?
Yes, so that's is it very lengthy or did it?
You want me to read it?
You can.
I'm happy to. Alright, Veterans Park Memorial Wall of Honor. Uh it's the history of the monument and procedures for addition of veterans new. The town of Bethany purchased the former Bethany West property on March twenty-six, nineteen ninety-seven. The board of selectmen voted on December thirteen, nineteen ninety-nine to rename the land as Bethany Veterans Memorial Park, the clubhouse as Lakeview Lodge and the pond as Hakunun Lake. The local belt, the local Beltski, uh hop veterans of foreign wars, VFW post number two, four, four, eight, presented a plan to construct a wall of honor at the park to the board of selectmen who approved the concept on August twelve, two thousand and two. The VFW worked to complete the project over several years and the monument was dedicated on June twelve, two thousand and five. The VFW raised funds to build the monument, in part by charging a standard fee to veterans or their families to have names engraved on the wall. Certain criteria were established, including being a resident of Bethany for at least a year and honorably discharged from a U.S. branch of service. Many of the existing names were done with the first batch. For subsequent names, the VFW created a form for veterans or their families to be added to the wall. Initially, applicants were charged per letter, but after the engraving company charged a flat fee was uh after the engraving company was changed, a flat fee was established. The current format is to list veterans' names, branch of service, and wartime era. Uh in two uh in twenty twenty-twelve, VFW post number two, four, four, eight was dissolved due to a decline in membership and the remaining members joined surrounding posts. At the time, the VFW approached the Bethany Historical Society about transferring ownership of the artifacts contained in the display cases at the Lakeview Lodge. They also asked the Historical Society to take over the placement of the names on the monument as applicants, as applications were submitted. The Historical Society agreed to take on the role of verifying qualifications, accepting the fees, and engaging the engraving company to periodically add new names. The old VFW application form was modified to conform to the new process. This is strictly a pass-through transaction for the society as the full two hundred dollars collected uh is later paid to the engraver. Several inquiries were made in recent months about the process to add new names. It became apparent that the board of selectmen should act to either endorse the current practice or designate a different method to complete the task. The Bethany Historical Society is happy to continue to do this work, but would also not be offended uh in the least if the town wishes to take an alternate place to the attached form currently in use uh and has further details on the process and is a form attached to it that basically requires uh the name of the sponsor, the address, the phone number, and the listed criteria, which says resident of Bethany for at least one continuous year, honorably discharged from a U.S. branch of service, service ribbon ribbon or medal in recognition uh of military campaign or operation. Reservations for name placement must be prepaid. The cost for each name is a flat fee of two hundred dollars. Each inscription may contain name, branch of service, and wartime era. Sample text, uh quote, John Doe, USMC, WW two, close quote. And then there is uh a box for the name of the honoree to be listed with the required information and a signature of the applicant. Uh the form is returned to the Bethany Historical Society, five, twelve, Amity Road, Bethany, Connecticut, zero, six, five, two, four. And uh then there's a third page, dates of wars and other recognition military campaigns and operations, and it lists kind of the codes that would be listed. Uh so the Spanish-American War would be SP apostrophe uh AM. Uh to the extent we have anyone uh from the eighteen nineties uh that would want to be added. And so that's page three. And it goes from the Spanish-American War up to the Afghanistan War.
Um so just, I I know because you're reading it to us, is uh, so if I'm a veteran, other than the two hundred dollars in information on my names, do I have to give you my discharge papers or any proof that I was in the military or just say I was?
Oh, well, uh well, it doesn't it says you have to have been honorably discharged from a U.S. branch of service uh. I don't know if we're doing an honor code here or page two of this form.
It it doesn't get into the details of saying. Probably should, people usually have their own. Defense department.
Normally, this would probably be someone saying, I wanna honor, you know, a deceased, like my grandfather or.
Yeah.
Uh. Some from my mother there.
And then this is all veterans, not just uh during combat areas or is it only during? Uh, cause you listed all the different periods.
Well, they have to provide their uh. From the US brand, no honorable, they have to be resident for at least one continuous year. An honorable discharge from a US branch of service. And a service ribbon or medal in a recognized military campaign operation. So.
That's a mandatory part, the.
It's eligibility criteria, one, two, three.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so so if you served just served during peacetime, then you couldn't go on that.
You might not have gotten a service ribbon or medal for that.
Okay.
Right, I I don't know how these are necessarily handed out, you you might have, it depending upon what you've done.
My father was a veteran of the army. But he was never granted admission to a VFW because he did not serve during a war. He was not overseas during the actual war. He was deployed as on the post-war peacetime cleanup mission. And so he is not considered a veteran of foreign wars. He's just considered a veteran of the military. And I will have to check, interestingly enough that we say that because. Mm-hmm. My father served and was over in China and 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 I tried to get some of his records. But the building where his records kept burns. So unless I can find somewhere in his personal items that I still have that he was honorably discharged. I have no way of obtaining a record.
Mm-hmm.
That he was honorably discharged because the building burned and everybody who had their records in that building, they're gone, yeah. So.
I mean, we'll just table it, obviously the service side of continue doing whatever they're doing, I want to get clarification on. Yeah. Wh- whether any veteran or you have to be veteran of a war or other action.
Doing active service as opposed to.
Right. Um just if we, I mean, the whole purpose is to try to make it clear and if you're a person who's thinking of maybe having your. Parents' name put on there, you should know whether you're eligible or not.
Mm-hmm.
Um so we'll we'll get clarification on that and also do they ask for any? Anything or just if you say my dad was in the Navy, then they're like, US Navy?
Well, I guess it's also, do you wanna continue? So this was originally uh designed by the VFW. And administered by the DFW, so that's probably, they had their criteria.
Oh, yeah.
And so I guess a question now that, in a sense, you own it, right, it's on town property and. You know, and it's being overseen by the Historical Society, but not in an informal way, do you wanna change the criteria? And say, well, you don't necessarily have to have been a veteran of farm war, you just need to be a Bethany resident. And establish that you're a veteran, right, so or do you wanna keep to the original?
Criteria.
The original mission.
I I asked you for clarification, I want the original.
That was handed off to them, Historical Society, so that's.
Yeah, so just clear.
We'll reach back out to Will, see if.
Okay, so we'll.
And then the uh whether you, if if it is limited to you have to have served during certain campaign periods or whatever, that um. If you, whether, even if you don't open it up to every veteran, sooner or later, you're gonna run out of space unless you're gonna.
Yeah, okay, so we'll postpone that one until we get some clarification. Yeah, no, no, uh but he hasn't had more inquiries lately, uh so that's why we were trying to get this sort of um. Memorialized a little bit. This next item, establishing policies and procedures, this is something we can just start a discussion on, we don't have to make any motion tonight, but I did have two. Requests for use of the gym. Uh one was for someone who does homeschooling and wanted to bring their children to sort of run around in the gym. And of course, my my the first thing I think of is liability, my 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 back of my hair and my neck goes up because I think, okay, what's our liability here? Um and then the other one was from a group who just wanted to come in and a group of gentlemen. Who wanted to come in and shoot baskets and once again liability. So um something to think about, we can certainly bring this up for future discussion because it's basically. Informal, non-exclusive use, there's no. Um formal group that wants to use it, it's just sort of random use.
Right.
So.
Consider it like in in context of, if I wanna take my soccer ball and go out to your field. And it's not being utilized by an organized sport.
Mm-hmm.
I can kick the ball around on public property and no one can come out and chase me away, right, I'm on public property, I'm I'm even kicking it into your net, right? This is now a public building. So while the building is open, if the gym is not in use, can anyone just come in and shoot baskets? Right, the way that they can shoot goals outside. Uh and that's kind of the a thought to say, well, there is a difference between indoors and outdoors. And doing, you know, uh we have, you know, business going on, we have other activity going on. Uh and you don't wanna necessarily have, I remember when I was in elementary school, uh during gym, it was like free. You know, free dodgeball and everyone was just throwing balls every which way, uh and that's what I envision, if you just open it up, you can come in and just shoot baskets. Without organization, what does that look like?
Cause you could have multiple people showing up at the same time wanting to do different things.
Yeah, somebody's got a whole pickup game going, somebody else has a reservation, maybe they're not kind of at least. Right.
But that's why.
In orange, I guess if somebody came in and started shooting baskets, they'd probably get away for a while, but. They, I don't think they have a po- I don't think they have a policy that.
I don't think there is.
Yeah, but I don't really.
It's not something that's generally.
And the thing is like, cause if you said, well, why don't you just form a league and, you know, whatever, oh, I have to get insurance then, like, well, maybe we don't want.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, cause they would definitely have to have some kind of proof of insurance because, you know.
You know, but in the context of being outside.
It's a little less.
It's a li- it's different.
Somebody could ask them to leave, it it probably depends on how big it got, if somebody's playing. Big soccer game, what are you doing here? But if it's just a few people on a weekend. And using a park, it's probably not gonna be anything.
Yeah, so it's just something to kind of think about and and just.
Probably not. I mean, that's not to say if somebody gets in there and hits a ball, they'll probably get away with shooting baskets for a while, but.
Yeah, I just like I said, my.
I don't know if you wanna formalize, it's a free-for-all, anybody can use it whenever.
Or formalize and say no.
They they cannot be used for.
This way, if someone does it and they get hurt, we gotta, they violated the the rules.
Right, right.
So something to think about, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but it is something to be, only because those requests came in and. I wanna make sure we do it properly, that we're, whoever uses it is protected, where the town is protected, um you know, it's some like.
In orange, not the gymnasium so much, but there's a a room with gym equipment in it, I think people have to pay a small.
Right.
Fee for that.
Right.
That's end they're registered and they must agree to whatever.
You can sign up to use them.
So there may be some intermediate groundwork, you you could do it, but you'd have to have a.
Mm-hmm.
But it wouldn't be without permission, it would be some kind of permission.
There'd have to be some sign, either waiver or something that they sign off on that they are not, like the town is not responsible for.
And then again, somebody's gonna have to check the schedule.
Right, well, during the daytime, it's very rare that.
Somebody's in there.
But in the evening times, there's other I I uh groups that come in there and use it, uh basketball league, uh the soccer league, the Amity Soccer, or somebody comes in and uses it. So therefore, there are other instances in the evening where it's booked by a group.
Mm-hmm.
Um uh who has reserved it, but this was more of a free time kind of thing and. So we just, like I said, wanna make sure that we put something in place that's makes sense and and is okay.
Maybe we want something we can steal from other towns.
Not steal, maybe, you know, look at and and, you know, use it as a reference and then. Okay, the next item is the seven codes um that the town code review committee had had uh. Discussed and made revisions to, and I and I understand Jamie's uh thought process. I I'm wondering if we recommend them to go forward to a town meeting, but at this point, by doing that. We can post them on the town website to be reviewed by the public, we can put a notice in the bulletin. To say that these these codes have been reviewed. Um and revised by the town code review committee and are now available for public review, um you know, with potential. Uh approval at the next town meeting, whether it's the one in May or, or you know. But I just figured getting them forward so that they can be up for review. Uh by the public, because like Jamie said, you know, you don't wanna bring them to a town meeting and have people sitting there that night looking at them. That night and having questions, but if we put them up there for review, people will have the opportunity ahead of time. To um get comments or feedback uh on that.
Yeah, if we if we if we vote on the town meeting, we're not voting on the town meeting today, we just say.
No, 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 no.
Plan on putting these on a future agenda.
A future.
It's open for comment.
Right.
Cause if there's a lot of, the town meeting, especially a well-attended one, doesn't work well for making lengthy amendments and.
But here's the thing.
Amendments to amendments.
If we put them up now, if we say, yes, we'd like these to go forward to a town meeting for approval, but we put them up on the website for review. If if there's feedback from them, from the public, then we, then they can go back to the town committee. For potential revisions again.
Yeah, so we're just, we're just pushing it out for public comment, but we're not voting on putting it on the town meeting agenda at this time.
No, I mean, no, no, we just wanna be able to say, we wanna post these for public comment. So that they will have the potential to go to a town meeting um at some point.
And I I understand that the code review committee, they ran into some of these kind of older. Ordinances that I think others, other people have passed over, it's like, yeah, we don't even wanna have a health department anymore.
With the sanitaryian and stuff like that, some.
So I understand they took a stab, but they knew some things were. Really out of date, um.
Yeah.
But um but yeah, maybe there's maybe there's more that we should do. The one I had was on the town officers committee meeting. Um and I saw they changed it from once a year to once every two years, I don't remember even the number of years. I think the problem is, how many of you held since you?
None, but.
This has come up before over the years, somebody will raise a, like a campaign issue. Well, you haven't had your uh town officers meeting in in three years.
Yeah, well, COVID didn't help when I first started either.
Even before that, it was, they were not held regularly and sometimes they'd be forced, like you'd like. I could see like having a town officers meeting and everybody gets trained on FOI, um and then. This from the nineteen fifty-six, I imagine the town officers uh probably fit on the first page. And now we've gone into, we've basically added all these other boards and commissions and um a number of town employees too. It's apartment, it's like, what's the difference between a town meeting and this town officers meeting? If if everybody on this list shows up, who else is left in town?
Well, you have a point, and you have to have quorum too, but the reason they went with the even years. Is because it would be the year after the municipal elections, so that you potentially have. New people, cause so if you wanted to do like a FOI workshop for all new employees, how meetings are run and how you. Post meet, post meetings and take minutes and, you know, uh something to bring new people up to to speed. And and a refresher course for people that have been on the boards and commissions. That was one of the thoughts of, that's why it went into the even year to have them. Because you now have new people coming in in December, cause we, obviously we changed from May to uh to November for our elections and people come into office at the beginning of December. So uh that was part of the thought process of doing the even years, cause our elections are odd years.
Yeah, um yeah, so I was just, one idea, I I understand that and it says. Um but of course, what's gonna happen is they're not always gonna be called, cause sometimes you're just gonna be forced, you know, like somebody's gonna come up with a. Um an idea. And you know, invite everybody, not a lot of them, because it doesn't really involve them.
In a way, it's almost nice to have that. That uh every other year a- after the elections, only because it might be a good opportunity for a lot of the boards and commission members to meet each other. And kind of network and understand what the other boards and commissions do. You know, cause sometimes people are in their own silo and they don't know what the other boards and commissions do.
Yep.
So um it could be.
It's just, I think you're gonna.
It's just a thought.
Uh, yeah, no, I understand it and I can see the case made, but I just worried that. Did they, they tried something like, eh, we're not, we're not really doing that often, let's make it every, but it may be that it doesn't happen every other year. Uh but assuming we stick with the what was there, um I would exclude the Handen Bethany Judge of Probate. I'm sure they edited that in the past. Um maybe they edited it for this one, but the Judge of Probate used to have an office in the town hall. Now the Judge of Probate doesn't know where Bethany is, so I wouldn't invite him. And the director, Director Health, um. The Director Health.
Which number was he, the Judge of Probate, which number was?
Seven.
Seven, okay.
Uh and then, so obviously not a town officer anymore, Director Health, I would probably take off as a town officer, depending on the topic. They might be invited, but the health departments are completely separate entities. However, and it does mention here, other other officials could be.
Mm-hmm.
Added, um if there was like a generalized. The purpose meeting was generalized talk about development of town and possibly changing, then yeah, you may want the.
Mm-hmm.
Um somebody from the health department there to talk about.
Right.
Those things, and then we have number fifteen, it says one resident state trooper. That was probably written when we had two, it said at least one has to come.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure whether they're town officials or not. Just kind of, and then it says twenty-five members constitute a quorum. If everybody came, you know, way more than that, but what do you do if you have less? And do you even need a quorum?
Well, it is considered a a meeting, it's a town officers committee meeting.
Yeah, I mean, is there, should be there a number for whoever shows up? Cause they don't seem to have any power. And then general comments on the fifty-four dash three, they struck everything out. I I didn't, I didn't even see why you need to get rid of it, you know, uh examination and discussion of possible ordinances. Um solution of particular problems or difficulties, those are just suggestions, like, why, why eliminate it? And the the last comment was.
On the same one?
Fifty-four dash six, complaints against officers and boards.
Mm-hmm.
And this was amended, so if somebody, if twenty people submit a petition. To the select them, then we have to call a town officers meeting and then they have to report to the town. And then it was amended to say that it gets reported at the next scheduled regular special town meeting. Um I I don't know, do you, because you, I'm not sure if every complaint that gets submitted here should go to a town meeting. If if somebody did a petition about the zoning officer, we have to have a town meeting on that?
Is.
I mean, maybe the, maybe the recommendation should go back to the.
Board of Selectmen, whether to have the meeting or not, so.
Well, this is the complaint one, telling the lectures. It it says then the town officers meeting has, the town officers meeting has to be called and they have to make a report. And it will be then given at the next regular special town meeting. I don't know if. The complaints, but that's really the appropriate. I think the the code review committee figured they should throw something in there, but I don't know.
Well, I I have a question, because it says the selectmen shall call a meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So that's forcing them to call a meeting, it doesn't say may, it says shall.
Right. Right, so if you get a petition. Um they have to call this town officers meeting to consider a complaint against a board or a town officer. And then the town officers meeting has to um make a report to the special town meeting. And you might have a hundred people. Or or the town, or this getting ready for this town officers meeting, so I'm not sure how they're gonna write a report. Um. I don't know, I just, I see some problems with it, I don't know, maybe should report back to the selectman?
Oh, oh, sorry, guys.
Maybe electric bill.
Yeah, no, we just were all sitting so still for so long that uh.
But I have no problem taking these drafts and just putting them, you know, putting them out for public comment. As uh you know, these these came out of the town code review committee and the selectmen are considering. Putting them on an upcoming town meeting and then how should we get comments, just emailed or?
Um, yeah, we could, we could put something in the uh bulletin to uh how they can submit comments. And then.
Yeah, put them on the website or something, I think that's the best way.
The the the, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, but we already, uh let's see. So the next bulletin is really not gonna come out until March. So we could postpone putting these up until the March bulletin, and that way we can put it right up in the bulletin.
Mm-hmm.
And then post them, cause to put them up and post them and have no way for people to really respond at this point.
Yep.
I think uh.
Uh as far as I know, none of them were emergencies, it needed to be acted on.
Just put an email link on the webpage. For people to.
For the comments to come to.
But we need a way to notify people that they're up and there, I mean, just the people on this meeting know about them.
But when does the bulletin in February go up?
It just, it just went out.
It just went out?
Yeah, it went out, it went out last week.
So, for three more weeks will be the next one or something?
But the uh notices have to be in by the fifteenth for the next issue, so next week, basically. Um.
Yeah, unless were any of these critical that had to, or these are more likely in the town meeting uh.
Yeah, there there's nothing that is of any urgency, so. Right, right, yeah, so we have a few months, I mean, so even if it if if they go up. The beginning of March, when the uh bulletin comes out, we can have a little write-up about them. In in the bulletin with how people can submit uh comments, uh we still have plenty of time.
Yeah, and again, I could see that they're they're trying to, there used to be this thing called the building code board of appeals. Which I doubt is bet since the nineteen sixties, you know, so they they were trying to update things, but.
Yeah, there are, there are some that are, that are pretty um, pretty dated, yeah, they're pretty.
And I don't know if any, but I mean, there's, there's still stuff in here that talks about the alarm users having a. Existing automatic dialing services that directly calls the uh state police or the fire department. I know when I was a kid, my neighbor had something like that, but I thought that was banned years ago, you gotta, you gotta go to an alarm company.
No, yeah.
Cause otherwise, they don't want like all these false alarms directly calling their.
Right.
Number, I don't think there are any of these anymore.
Well, mine goes to a service and then they notify.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you're allowed to just have a.
Auto.
Yeah, you know, reel-to-reel tapes and.
Yeah, yeah, so, all right, so basically what we'll do is we will um put something in the March bulletin.
Yeah, just, so these are the drafts that that came out of the town code committee, you know, please let us know if you have any comments, and I digest those and. And maybe people that know more about stuff out there than than you do and.
Yeah.
They'll get better.
Okay, so we will uh let that go, all right, the next one, um thirteen and fourteen, Vin has um. Vetted, for lack of a better, I know another word to use, but the policies and the um job description. So uh thirteen is the policies and the procedures, and those were resigned and um. Looking like the black and white copy, but.
Yeah, they were, they had some.
The ones that would stand to you were.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah. Uh, and I, I didn't have any uh issue with uh. This, they're, they're, these ones are specific to Bethany Hoops.
Right.
But uh.
And then, then they will use these sort of as a, as a baseline to work on. For the, for the programs, you know, so, but I, I think they're pretty straightforward, um. So as soon as these get approval, we will put them in a finalized format and make sure they're, they're posted. Um, on the town website and uh. So just to kind of further the discussion, can I get a motion to approve them and then we'll continue discussion?
Yep, so moved.
And I will second, and then we can continue the. Uh, like I said, Vin has vetted these and made his necessary. Uh recommendations and adjustments and revisions to them to make sure they are, what was the phrase you used?
Um compliant, legal, good legal order.
Good legal order, thank you.
Yes, it seemed to make sense and uh I suspect that over time that'll, people will come up with, oh, this doesn't work for us, or you gotta, you know, change something.
Well, you know, and sometimes these are like fluid documents as, as programs progress.
Right.
And change, then you adjust accordingly, but um like I say, as long as we know they're in good legal order and and compliant. Um, we are good, any other comments or questions? All right, oh.
Am I allowed to say anything?
Well, it's not public.
Okay.
Um, all right, uh, then all in paper?
Aye.
Okay, the policies, um procedures passed, and then we move on to the. Uh park and direct, yeah, parks and rec, uh director, job description. So uh in order for discussion, can I get a motion to approve and then we'll discuss?
Um, it's along two of us, I guess I'll move.
And I'll second, so we can discuss, um once again, this document has also been vetted uh. By town council to make sure that it is in good standing order, compliant, uh makes, it's in a good format and such. So do you have any comments or questions regarding this?
Um, no, it it seemed okay, and again, we may have to change things going forward. Um, under program management, the first line, I, I don't like the uh. Before and after school program all capitalized, cause I'm not sure if the town's gonna, gonna do the, those programs. Um. I'd rather have, I mean, it, the way it's written, you, the the summer camp, before and after, and Bethany hoops. Are uh all listed there, and then the next line is develop additional recreational programs. So I think what kinda happened over time is the park and rec department pretty much just did summer camp, before and after school and hoops. Very limited adult programs, uh but in the past, they used to do other ones. Um. So because it's, it's, it's pretty specific that before and after school, I'd rather either strike it or change it to um. Um. Youth programs or something like that, that way if the town ends up running it, it's covered. But if the town doesn't end up doing the childcare aspect, but just runs.
So you wanna change the before and after school program to say youth programs?
Or something along those lines, yeah.
Then thoughts?
Cause the way it's capitalized, it's a specific entity, before and after school program, which is what we were doing back, you know, before June.
Well, I mean, we, we could put, you could have enrichment programs, seasonal programs, and youth programs, which may include. Summer camp, before and after, you know what I mean, we're saying may.
Well, you just say youth programs, uh and then you, because depending upon the direction of the camp. Right, uh during an interview process, you know, you can discuss that type of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, without, you know, unless you're. Trying to attract someone specific with certain qualifications for like a summer camp program or something like that. But a, a general park and rec director, again, it should be someone that uh handles various matters that transcends all ages. Right, you've got your seniors, you've got your uh middle-aged people, I guess, and then you've got young people.
Yep, right.
Um, yeah, so I don't think it should be as specific, summer camps are pretty. I don't know, every park and rec department, but most offered, it's a traditional park and rec activity, and the Bethany hoops is a. Longstanding one, but the before and after school program, the park and rec grant is. Um, I think I heard of one other, you know, the, there aren't a lot of towns, the, the park and rec department does, and it's run by other.
So, so if it, so if it were to read oversee the planning and execution of enrichment programs, seasonal programs. And youth pro, yeah, and youth programs, which may include summer camp, Bethany hoops, before and after school.
Yeah, but without saying before and after school, I don't know, just.
You wanna, you wanna take that out completely?
Yeah. And youth programs, I think that's good.
So taking out summer camp and Bethany hoops as well?
No, I I I think as long as you have the, just those as examples, non-exclusive examples, that's useful, and you're pretty sure that.
Which may include summer camp and Bethany hoops, but taking out the.
Yeah, including or such as, meaning not exclusive, and you're pretty sure that no matter what. Park and rec is gonna be doing summer camp in the future and Bethany hoops.
All right, so, okay, all right, so we'll just put youth programs, which may include summer camp and and Bethany hoops. Okay.
It's really the only thing I have, and it's, and it's not really tonight, but I think we should um. You know, have a determination pretty soon, like, I would say, what I can, is if the town should look into having. Basis, whether J C C can set up a program up in Bethany, like they had before. And then we don't have to run a uh after school.
Well, that requires quite a procedure for licensing, so I think that was one of the issues when we approached them last time, was that.
Right.
Six months or something?
They were told to look into it now, they probably.
Right, well, there's, yeah, yeah, there's obviously.
If we wait till August, they'll say, not possible.
Right.
Um, but yeah, I mean, since that's where the town got into trouble, I can be the best to avoid that. I do understand that there, there are families that need, it's become almost a necessity, many, many towns offer it.
Yeah.
So it's something that the, the school or the town has, it has to be offered, but I prefer. I think the main issue with J C C now is, it's down in Woodbridge, that's the only way they can put it together quickly. If they'd be willing to come back up to Bethany, either the school or to the uh annex building or both, however it worked out.
We could have, we could have a conversation with them, I just, you know, we'll see, but but uh.
Right, but I think it has to happen sooner or later.
Yep.
And then the other thing is, depending on if primary focus of park and rec is gonna be. Before and after school, that may affect who's your best candidate, you know, somebody with really more of a childcare background. Um, as opposed to, you know, more of a traditional whistle around the neck, uh recreation director. It's gonna be more like the Bethany hoops and, and summer camps, um originally, summer camps weren't really daycare, they were more um. Socializing and things like that. And I ha- I have a concern about, I finally read the state statute section, cause I kept hearing, you know, towns don't have to license and. I'm pretty sure there, there's two areas of the statutes under the, under public health. One has to be reviewed camps and one is childcare centers, and uh I'm pretty sure in both of them, they're run by municipalities. Municipal day camps uh and uh childcare, I don't have to be licensed. What I can't tell is are they exempt from all of the other things that follow up? Um, I'm kinda suspect, I suspect they are, because other things that are listed as exemptions, like um. Informal family arrangements and things like that.
Hmm.
Wh- why would you say you don't have to license, but you have to have all this, all this training and uh. Experience and um, so that's not good for us, because. I I don't think, I I think the town would prefer to have a, the people would prefer to have, and I think they were expecting. A license or like the, all the same requirements, not, you know, including staffing ratios, and. And then if it's not, then there's, what are the requirements?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and if, if it's, and if, if it's not a requirement for your summer camp or. After school programs, then maybe the town as a policy should say. But for sending the check and the application to the state, we're gonna follow all of the requirements.
Yeah, I love, um.
I've heard people say, oh, we were supposed to, we were supposed to do that, and just based on a quick read, definitely not required to license. And that may also, the way it's written, may also mean none of the requirements that follow apply. So if a town is running a, a day camp or a. Um, childcare thing, there's like new rules.
Well, I think folks is doing our due, our overdue diligence to make sure that we have the proper things in place to run.
Yeah, but I can't, I don't know how, I don't know J C C is running today, but when they ran up at the school. They were, they were maintaining staffing ratios, not just in the program, but in each location where kids were. So if there were kids in the gym, kids in the cafeteria, kids out on the field. They were always ma- they were always making sure they had the staffing ratio in each place.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which indirectly gets you to, there can never be a, a child and an adult, you know, alone together.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Which um.
Yeah. Yeah, but I, I think with, with the change we've made here, we can get this approved, because I know they do have um. Interviews coming up, so they have at least uh something to have a co- conversation with. Uh, or then just to reach out, there's enough that can put up, we can, we can provide them with this um. To have as a talking point as well, so, um, any other comments or questions for it?
Yeah, on the um, on the job description.
And I will make that change with regard to taking out the before and after. Programming and, and refer to uh youth programs, which may include summer camp and Bethany hoops, okay? And then involving them various community events, such as the hardest estimate, um, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will make that change, and I will make sure she, uh they get it. And then I think we are on to rants, is that possible?
Yeah, I wanna.
Oh, no, the other.
And that way into parking, actually, I'm gonna do them, I know the interviews are tomorrow evening.
Okay.
And um. I know we've, we've been invited to attend, and I'm not sure, I can kinda see the benefit. Uh, not at participating, cause I guess they're gonna make recommendations, but I'm sitting in the back room and hearing them. But if the other members aren't going, I'm kinda worried that it's.
Well, I, I have, you know, I, cause I stepped back from that process, because I figured if they're gonna be sending to the board of selectmen. Um, I, I, I just didn't, but I mean, you and Gina could obviously.
Uh, yeah, could go.
You know, that's.
I'm not sure whether, which, which is the best.
Right.
Cause if I go and I've heard people, then. And you guys haven't heard the person, then, so, okay. Um, and then the other one is, Gina had wanted to, like a little clarification of. What, what you meant by recuse, or it's only from the park and rec.
From the process of, of their doing the interviews and the review of the packets and, and then who they, they recommend, I figured I didn't. I wanted it to be neutral on that piece, so.
But not everything to do with parking lot.
Yeah, yeah, not, no, exactly, not everything. Um, so, yeah, um, the number fif- so we're good with that, okay, uh number fifteen, um. Sharon, this was the one you had suggested to me to put back on here, because uh we really need to. Look at reviewing departments and their uh functionality and their everything, though, thoughts?
Well, you had um. Well, first, based on the recommendation of town council, the board of finance. Well, to you.
Yeah.
For, for approval at, at the time, you know, I, I kind of feel. I wish that you had decided to do it then, because you would have an open-running park and rec department now, uh if you had. Asked for that consultant review of park and rec, because that person was a specialist in, in getting. In what, what, what would we call it, the turnaround on, on non-functional or. Whatever problematic municipal segments, I mean, he had incredibly lengthy. Resume and recommendations, but um. I don't know, um, the, what, what we originally had had in mind was that. Ask somebody to actually look at park and rec and make recommendations for how. How they should be organized, make sure to fix everything, and then um. Rec- make recommendations for what the job description should be for, for a director. Um. I don't know, I, I'm not sure, well, I haven't been following what the park and rec commission has been doing. Um, so I have no idea.
I mean, right now, they basically, they've got Bethany hoops running, they are doing the interviews for a director. They are doing the interviews for a director, you know, they've put some policies.
I'm, yeah, my concern is that um. That they are a volunteer board, that's been, they've been working their tails off trying to. Address everything, but. It's an overwhelming topic and I just think it might be a good idea for you to have some. Outside review of what's going on. Because it would be good for the town to have an independent review. And it's on your agenda and whatever.
I don't know why it keeps appearing on the agenda, so we're not doing a management review consultant.
Your what?
We're not doing a management review consultant. There was one talked about for Park and Rec.
That that's.
Hiring one employee. What 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 kind of organizational information do they need? We're hiring, we're hiring someone with expertise in Park and Rec, hopefully, they get somebody who's qualified. The the one resume I saw was a, like a person who had worked at town manager and other positions, retired now. Don't you think the Park and Rec director is gonna have more experience? And then there was some talk about about having, I never understood what the scope was, like looking at all the town hall.
That that's a separate thing having to do with exposure throughout the town because we uh. We have, we have issues of um, independent verification on things, separation of responsibilities. Uh, last night, we had our H R slash I T. Slash Selectman's Assistant. Giving us enough I T stuff that would be, well. She can't handle all the things that she's doing, and there need to be.
Yeah, I don't, I just don't, I just don't think the solution is, I'm outside consultant, I think. Uh, if there is a problem or multiple problems, those should be listed and then addressed. Cause I was just thinking about it, it's like, there's like fifteen people that work in the town hall. And.
And three of them work in the town clerk's office.
Right, and they say, but most of their jobs are like defined by statute, so what exactly is this management consult?
Part of the problem is, Bob, is I don't know I have a problem. Right, because I'm I'm just operating. And it's hard for me to self-define what my problems are, so I hire an outside party to examine. Me, right, my and my organization skills and abilities and talents and whatnot, and then explain to me. Whether or not I have a problem, you know, part of the issue was. Superficially, on the on the exterior, Park and Rec, no one had a problem with for decades. But it was, for lack of a better word, a problem. Right, but we didn't know that was a problem, because we were just, because we were it, we were operating. Despite the problems, because nothing like what we experienced. Came to light, so, you know, so we don't know what our problems are, is the point. And, you know, we, you're right, there are certain jobs, like the town clerk, the the registrar, they're statutory. And they're scoped, but as an organization, as a town government. You know, we've been operating in a. In a familial informal way in a lot of areas for decades. And so the point of it is, is to get ahead of a potential next problem. Isn't it best practice to not self-examine, because it's hard for me to self-define what my problems are? Is it that, is it money well-spent to have an exterior person, an expert come in and say. You can better serve the needs of your community by doing this, or you're deficient here, or you're good. We get, maybe we get a help, the report card. But how can we, in particularly in the face of what we've come through, coming out of. Sit uh, with confidence that every department. Is doing what they are supposed to do, I mean, I can undertake the exercise and you could go to the Board of Finance for. Tens of thousands of dollars, you know, uh, to to do that, but. But but I'm not skilled like an, like a third-party expert who does this for a living. And so the 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 only point of the recommendation is coming out of what we came out of last summer, or this past summer. We felt it was strongly advisable. To uh, get someone from the outside to just give us a report on, are we good? Or where should we focus next? Uh, because this is, in my view, this is not just a Park and Rec issue. You know, when when the first selectwoman came on board, there was an, there were issues in the finance department, there were issues in land use. And, you know, those departments now have been addressed, you know, some, I think finance is now in a much different position today. Than it was three years ago. Uh, and that's the point, is it's hard for us to know. And so you you do nothing because we don't have a problem. Uh, or you could try to get ahead of the problem. By by trying to identify where your weaknesses are, where your inefficiencies are, and where you can provide a better service to your residents. And that's, I think, ultimately what the goal is, uh, and and to avoid, you know, what aren't we doing? What should we be doing more regularly? Like like the angle we'd be with the officers.
Yeah, there are, the the thing is that the places where we um. Are exactly following statute or. And and of the, the all the financial rules. We're doing that most of the, of them because there has been a problem. And because auditors, people from the outside came in and did an independent review. Our auditors have told us that we should be looking at our organizational structure.
So as I see it, as I started to say. We're not talking about the highway department, cause I don't think there's a different, th- those guys are up at the garage, so you're talking about people who work in the town hall. And that the building, I know what the building official is gonna do. I know what the zoning enforcement officer and the wetlands officer does. I know what the registrars or voters do. The town clerk, the tax collector, the only real question is the, their assistants are clerical. So I just don't think it's really, we need somebody else to come in, and over time, as people have come and gone and different skills. Those are the people that have changed around, I'm part-time in this office, I'm part-time at this office, I now I leave to go somewhere else. You know, we're really not getting enough work done, we need a full-time person, I don't think we need somebody. With the the few people we're talking about, I think you need to come up with. We noticed that this person seems to not have much work to do and this person's overworked. I don't think you need some, cause the consultant's gonna come in, and he's gonna interview you, and you're gonna tell him what the problem is, he's gonna put it in a report, he or she. And give it back to you, there's it's, there's not that many people here.
It's it's, it doesn't, it's not the number of people, it's the efficiency.
It's the pr- the processes and and the efficiency, there are um. Our our attorney gave us a list last summer of all the different uh, policies. That ought to be in place, that ought, by statute are supposed to be in place, that we don't have. And there there are functions that we don't have, there are things we're supposed to be doing by statute that we're not doing. Because they they were passed and we didn't pay any attention to them. And there are things, we just don't know what we don't know.
There's probably a lot of towns, if you went through every statute, they're not complying with lots of them.
I agree, we have.
And then some of them are. There's no penalties or anything and so.
That's that, we we have to be a little more proactive instead of just because they're doing it, doesn't mean it's. Or not doing it, however you wanna look at it.
I'll put it this way, I'm not, I'm not, let's stop talking about not voting for a management consultant, I mean, you're first selectwoman, you're the manager. If you don't know what you're doing, there's a problem.
You're missing the whole point, you're missing the whole point.
But it's, I think, you're saying we need to get someone who knows what, about how to run a town to come in and tell us. What to do, and if we, none of, nobody knows how to run a town, that's the problem. Um, I I think you really need to focus more on what, not on, we don't think we have a problem, but let's see if somebody can come in. What is the problem, is it, is it that um. You know, and then so- solve the problem, the two problems, whatever we're having, we're not having a problem, you don't need a solution.
We, I can, I can tell you that we need some kind of help restructuring. Um, employee salaries, benefits, and um, we have no, for example. Uh, the performance reviews.
See, no, that's different, the the, when we came up with the um.
But that.
Job description from twenty, twenty years ago, the town did employ a human resources consultant, it was a retired. Um, personnel or human resources person, and but it wasn't a general management study, it was. At the time, uh, the job descriptions were nonexistent or ancient and um. There was complaints about salary structure, so the person came in and they they put in job descriptions for everyone, which. Some of them may have been updated since then, but a Park and Rec had not, right?
Probably only to be with.
They weren't really bad descriptions, but I could see somebody updating that, but that's different from a. Management consultant to look at organizational structure.
But they probably were looking at some of the organization of it.
Give it a different name, um.
I think the main, the only, cause everybody's got their roles and then every town does it the same way.
But every town doesn't, Bob.
Yes, they do, in terms of basic functions and departments. They may come up with. Well, I think, I think the best way to solve an issue you're having is. You should make this person full-time and bring in a part-time person here, and that's all they're gonna be able to come up with. So if it's a, if it's a, if it's someone to review and update job descriptions and to look at uh. Salary ranges, then that's a different thing than just a management consultant.
They would tell us how, they would, they could make recommendations, I.
I have never seen a scope work for this, the only time it came up, there was one resume or something from. A retired town manager, um, who, and I think it worked in maybe Newington and.
Been all over the state.
And my thought was, they're gonna come in here and they're gonna go, oh, in my town. Where where you have one person, I had four people, I recommend you have one people.
It's unfortunate that that um, you didn't have the opportunity to talk to him or to, you know. Or or to talk to any of the other people, but that's fine, you know.
Well, if.
If you think we're fine.
If you're talking about the human resources, the the job description, that's different, and again, I've never seen a scope of work of what. Management review consultant is, so I've been assuming what it is, is studying the organization and what people do in town hall. And that's why I'm very critical of it, because every town has the same organization. And you're gonna be spending a lot of money for somebody to say, you should have, you should have a town clerk's office. And there should be somebody who collects taxes, you call them a tax.
They may have the same, they they may have the same offices, town clerk, registrar, whatever. But I don't, and and as much as they may have to work by statute. There are still deficiencies, there are still organizational pieces that. Sometimes, like you said, we don't know what we don't know. You know, when I first started working here, the 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 key phrase was, well, that's the way we've always done it. And my response was, that doesn't necessarily mean it was the right way to do it. So, just because that's the way it was always done, doesn't mean it's the most efficient or it's the right way to do it. Sometimes you need an objective outsider to walk in the door and say, you know, you really need to think about, maybe we should be doing it. This way, whether, you know.
We need.
Sometimes.
Well, let me give you an example, uh, there was the issue with the bus and the handicapped person. Uh, where we were providing bus services, I think, uh, going around picking people up.
Just in your bus.
But there was uh. There was a a belief by the department head that they didn't necessarily have to pick up a person in in a wheelchair. Because it was more problematic getting on the bus and and I said, no, if you're gonna provide that service. You can't discriminate against a handicapped disabled person, so you either have to get rid of the bus, or you have to pick up the disabled person. You don't get to, but prior to having that conversation, there was the belief that, well, you're you're too much of a. A risk or too much of a uh, uh, effort for me and my staff, so we're just not gonna do it. Well, that's the way we always did it, and we left the handicapped person sitting on, you know, to deal, to fend for themselves. Well, I said, no, we can't do that, you're either gonna get rid of the service or you're gonna increase your your effort, but you can't have it your way. And so it's things like that, where uh, over the years. From one department head to a next department head, we've inherited. Processes that were acceptable decades ago, that are no longer accept acceptable, and if we ever got. Tagged with a civil rights violation for violating some disabled person's civil rights by not letting them on the bus. You know, we don't want Bethany to be back on the news and doing something, you know, because of something naive, not something intentional, but naive. Uh, so, you know, and but for a conversation of, well, you know, uh, where it just was raised to me, and I said, no. You can't do that, that's when we addressed that issue. If that, if that person didn't raise the question to town council, town council would have never known, right? And the practice would have gone on, and one day. We would have ended up on the news, because you know it's gonna happen, where someone's gonna stand up and say, you know. Uh, you know, you're gonna just find that person in the wheelchair on a country road in a corner, saying, I I got, I got abandoned here. You know, that's what we're trying to say, we didn't, we we had no way of knowing, this board. Even the first selectwoman would have no way of knowing, whoever that person who holding that office, would have no way of knowing if that was the practice of the department head. Unless they asked the question, you know, and I'm grateful they did. Uh, so we were able to put a stop to something that created a a real risk to the town, so it's. Having someone kind of, in my view, if you want, if you wanna operate in the best way possible. You wanna get rid of practices like that, you wanna get rid of practices that maybe back in the fifties and sixties and seventies, maybe even eighties, we'd get away with. But today, you can't get away with any of that stuff, and if you, if you're engaging in that type of stuff. You know, you 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 run a risk, you're, and you raise the liability. Uh, and it's impossible for any town attorney to know, any first selectwoman, any board to know. What is actually going on unless there's an assessment. And, you know, an assessment, you know, uh, should be done by an independent person. So that there's not, you know, you you don't have employment, it's it's just, it's. It's just, in my view, best practices, particularly because of where we're at, coming through, you know, if if. The the Park and Rec issue never arose, we would have never had this issue, we still would have, it still would have been a good idea to do the assessment. But we wouldn't be having this conversation, I think in light of what we've we've gone through. It's naive to think. That, well. You know, any, any, and you know, look, Jim Ziole has been there for twenty years, he wouldn't know. That, you know, if the bus driver is leaving the handicapped person on the side of the road.
Unless they're complaining.
Unless there's a complaint, and you don't, you don't want the complaint to happen, and so.
And the management review consultant would only know that if it was a complaint, or they happened to ask that question or.
Well, but you wanna get, you wanna get into that, what services do you provide, how do you provide them, you know, uh, who are your customers? You know, uh, and and, you know, things will, because of the way the questions are asked, they'll, they'll, they'll kind of hopefully. Rise up concerns, or, you know, like Park and Rec. Well, your your policies are not updated, you know, why aren't your policies updated? You know, because they would review, they they would have a knowledge of the law of of the areas, and they would know what, what policies should be in place. And they would be able to review the policies we have in place and say, look, the following policies need, it's recommended that you at least do the following. Uh, and uh, so that was the thought process, I I understand with. Uh, and like I, I've I've said to uh, the finance chair and the first selectwoman before, it doesn't matter our size. Like, if if a legal issue comes up, like every town has to deal with the same legal concerns, it doesn't matter the size of the town, it's all the same. So, you know, but, you know, uh, smaller towns often think, well, we're smaller, so it shouldn't cost as much. Well, you know, reviewing a contract is the same here as reviewing a contract is the same there, your policies and procedures and uh, personnel. Uh, should be similar. In each department, but the amount of personnel required might be dependent upon your your population, right? So you're gonna have much smaller departments here because your population is small, uh, but. You know, but again, it's. It's having someone with the knowledge of municipal operations. Uh, and the experience be, to be able to identify what the, what the issues are, and so that's. That's the 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 focus of it, not only so you can become more efficient, you can become more compliant, uh, but you can become more effective. That's the, the, the focus of it. Not only so you can become more efficient, you can become more compliant, uh, but you can become more effective. For your uh, uh, you know, for your uh, town. And you might be able to downsize, right? Because in today's world, everything is becoming, you know, automated, if you will, computerized, you know? And I'm not gonna say, not gonna pick on a department, but you know, a department that has three may only need two if you can start doing things online. You know, maybe we're, so it's, it's to try to bring us up to compliance and efficiency. Uh, but uh, that's something that could happen over time also, as the first selectman was doing. And when she goes, you know, from department to department, just hadn't quite gotten to the parking wreck.
Yeah, and then, as I said, it's, it's, it's the um, it's always been a town clerk, tax selector. The other people who work in the town hall has changed over time and will continue to change. A lot of times based on the people's abilities and uh, needs. I, I think I'd rather focus on. What the issues are. And you had mentioned one, which was, we have a, we're selectmen's. Executive assistant, administrative assistant, and we have an IT person, and we have an HR person. Now, so if the problem is, there's too much on her plate. Then let's solve that problem without hiring somebody to tell us what we already know, right? And uh, I, I, I'd rather, rather focus on that instead of paying somebody. A lot of money. And then periodically, maybe it is time to have somebody. Update all the job descriptions and um, look at competitive salaries and stuff.
And benefit.
If we have, we have, if we really have an HR person, maybe that's something that they could do, particularly if you. Really, your focus on the job descriptions may only be when the job has to be posted again, is when you update it. And, you know, there's not that many people and not that much turnover. Like the parking wreck description.
There's a lot, there's a lot involved, and it's not something we should be. We need to get into the weeds on here, but there are a lot of issues where, where HR should. Should be looking at the structures.
Jen was doing it part-time, there was no HR person.
That doesn't make it okay.
No, I'm just saying that, you know, we, we're doing more than has been done in the past.
We're trying to, you know, there's, there's trying to get it done. Um, last night. We were talking about IT and the fact that we're going to significantly increase. One way or another, our financial commitment to IT. Because right now we're getting, what, two hours of, of onsite help every two weeks? And that doesn't, that's not sufficient to. To our needs. And that's gonna be, those people are very expensive. But uh, but meanwhile, we have somebody. Else who is filling in, but then if that person is filling in, they're not doing. Any of the HR analysis and restructuring that needs to be done.
Yeah, and BCS had done, I don't know how they're doing it now. They had done it that way before they had. They had somebody in-house that could handle a lot of the day-to-day computer things, and then they had to pay a consultant to do.
But we don't have in, in, in-house, well, anyway. We don't, we don't have the personnel to support that, the in-house part, you know, um.
And in the town that's as small as we are, there's a lot of people there. You can't, you just can't afford to put an entire full-time person on a task, so we have to be. Cross-training and.
Part-time that wants to do it too. So we, we have certain limitations, so there's a reality to our.
In situations where we have professional level needs and. We don't have enough professional level people in the right positions.
I mean, things have developed over time. They need more bodies covering different things, you know, I mean, so.
Every municipality, every department does not have enough people. And they're probably not wrong. They'd like, I could do my job better. I'm not doing everything I should be doing. It's, it's not, it's not just Bethany. It's uh, every town. But to, to do things perfectly.
Would wanna do things better. Except in, in the finance office, we have to be perfect, but every place else we would like to be.
But yeah, but if, if you, if you designed the perfect town, and then you wrote the mill rate down. It wouldn't work. You know, uh, people don't, people don't wanna pay what, doing everything.
Right.
Oh, but.
But then they're complaining when it's not there.
Well, you, you know, like I say, I see everything as a liability, so you wanna do it right.
So I, if the scope work is a management to look at organization, and I don't think we need that. It's just overkill for our tiny organization. If, if we can't, if we don't have the manpower in-house. To do an update on the um. Job descriptions and the uh, salary ranges, um, and that's something that the town has. Going outside, if we're in, we could do again.
Well, look at the scope, because I have all those job descriptions in twenty fifteen, and many of them are outdated.
But the other way, it, it could be if like, well, gee, there's not a lot of turnover and. If you have an in-house HR person, they maybe say, hey, look, if there's only gonna be. One, I have to update one a year, I can just do that in-house. It's a little harder with the, but it's possible, um. To look at the uh, pay ranges, you know? But I think that was why we had to, that was one of the main reasons is people complaining about their pay, and we realized that somehow this per, this. Job had, you know, really, they were about the same skill level, but for some reasons, one person had. Gotten way ahead of the other one, and it was kind of a fairness issue.
We can potentially work on a scope, and then maybe you know, we could reach out to the council of governments and see if they have any. Cause that person.
But that's what we did last time.
That, that's, that, because the person that did Bethany's also did the cons.
The person who did Bethany's twenty years ago? Is she still?
I don't know if she is, but maybe there's someone in her.
Cause she was retired.
She was doing it when I was. Yeah, so, okay, so we'll do a scope, and we'll, we'll, we'll come back on that. Uh, Les- Leslie.
Grants. ARPA, we are spending the last bit of money that we have left. I was very excited to see that the balance in the checking account is under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Which means we have, the town has done its due diligence to spend as much of that one point. Seven million dollars as possible by December thirty first. And there is one steep grant that is still outstanding, that is the work at Public Works, and that continues. The Dolora Grant for the million dollars was a HUD project. I believe it has been reassigned exactly to where I do not know, because of all of the shakeup at the federal government level. We have received our first reimbursement on that, but right now we are. Proceeding with additional work very cautiously and very carefully. Until we know exactly how reimbursements are going to shake out with the reassignment. And the trip grant, those, the deadline is the seventh. Uh, we may be resubmitting Round Hill Road, I do not know for sure. Um, because the scope of the work has been changed by the Public Works Director. And he's currently on vacation, and I'm waiting for full details before we know exactly what we're going to do on that. The project costs could be coming down significantly.
The trip grant?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I wondered if there was, uh, I hadn't seen the plans.
It requires a match now.
The trip does require a match, yes.
But I was wondering if we didn't get the grant, which is available, and we had to do it a hundred percent taxpayer money. If, if the scope could have been reduced, but I, I.
That's, that's where, that's where.
Still.
We were supposed to have all that information last week, and we did not. Um, I know that um, part of it was re, was rescheduled for onsite visit this week. So.
And who's, who's uh, Don Merkel?
Well, I know that, well, no, I know that um, we were looking for um, remeasurement through TILCON for paving. And they were to be out, on, they were supposed to be onsite this week. It was supposed to be last week, but that was pushed to this week. Um, Robin is working on. Spending money that she received in a grant. Uh, she has until the end of this year to spend the rest of it, and we are still working on pulling together a good time. To start up the grant. Brainstorming committee. That's the best way of putting it.
Yeah, I hope something good. I, I just was, I think there were some people who felt with some, maybe the past. Grant or two that went to the town meeting that maybe they want the highest priority, but by the time I got to them, it's. Vote yes or no. It's, you know, nobody had an opportunity to say, uh. Maybe something else we could use the money for.
Well, the thing is that once you have the grant, the scope of the grant is already determined. So what we need is people to be brainstorming upfront, to have other ideas beyond. Uh, town infrastructure projects, which is obviously what we see, cause they're in front of our faces all the time.
Well, there was, there was, there were some issues with the. Public Works addition on second floor, particularly the. It being described as an emergency shelter, which I don't think it ever will be a real emergency shelter. And it just seemed like, that was like. But extra space so the guys have a place to sleep, that would have been an easier cell than an emergency shelter. And then the. The uh, Lakeview Lodge Emergency Shelter just seems crazy. Maybe for Beacon Falls, it could be theirs.
Well, unless, unless.
Well, and, and it said that they put people in there when the tornado came through and Route forty-two was blocked, which meant. No one else in town could get there except a few people on the other side of the blockage. It's very, very nonsensical. And then it's, I, I, what I'd heard is in the condition of the grant is that we have to put in a sprinkler system. So that's, that's maintenance expense going forward. Um, just, and then the generator and stuff, and how often is it really gonna be used, if ever? So, you know, it's, well, if it's all federal money, I guess we don't care, waste it, you know, but. The, the, the tax query would never vote for their own tax dollars to go into that. Right? You know, I'm, I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying that it almost seemed like it was one person's. What do you call it? When an idea pops in their head and, and then that's it, either you, you take the, the money or not.
I think that what happens is we see the, the grants, and we look through the lists and say, do we have anything that could fit under this? And, and that's.
I think one of the.
What we've been doing.
I think one of the charges of the com, the committee may be to potentially have projects, what they call in the draw, ready to go. Because a lot of times when these um, grant notifications come out, they give you like two weeks to turn around and submit something. So um, if we have something already sort of ready to go in the draw. Then, you know, we can be faster to, to apply for these things.
Yeah, and just because of the grants for the station, if you don't have a project for it, then don't, don't, don't make one up, you know?
Yeah, mostly haven't been.
Anyway, um, anything else, Leslie? We have one piece, um, I meant to bring up at the beginning when we were talking about Betsy's stuff. But uh, she did certify the grant list um, Friday. And so, um. Uh, glad we filled our paperwork on time this year, so we, we got hit with the. Some major exemptions and things, um. We, our grant list is getting hit for eleven million dollars and change.
And why is that?
Because of motor vehicle, uh, here, here's, okay, here's the, here's her explanation on the bottom. Here's the grant list. Uh, and then on the other side of it is the um, exemptions.
One of the biggest reasons is the state, stat, the state legislatures. Change in how motor vehicles are calculated.
Yeah, so.
It was, it was delayed or something.
Yes, yeah, so it was a combination of, of, of uh, motor vehicle and.
Our motor vehicles are taking an eleven percent hit. Um, Betsy said, I mean. The assessors have been talking, some of them have been hit as, as much as an eighteen percent reduction, some towns. So most towns are seeing a double-digit decline in the assessed value of motor vehicles.
Instead of blue book, it's this depreciation.
Yep.
Yeah, so she put the, she put some examples or some explanation on the bottom of the one page there that you're looking at.
Hundred percent total permanent disabled exemption. For the entire assessment. And then uh, so, so the six million dollar um, personal properties, glad we. It's uh, it's, they should have been, they shouldn't have paid it last year, they just.
They didn't, a couple of years in a row, they did not file the paperwork in time, so we. But this year, they learned their lesson from those past experiences and submitted everything on time this year. So that's why there's this big hit.
Okay, so it's uh, eleven nine eleven.
It shows you right, she shows you right here on this, at the current mill rate, at the current mill rate, what the loss amount would be. So I just wanted to, and I, I will share this paperwork with, with Gina, like, she's not here, but.
Yeah, so the finance board is um, starting the year off with a.
And it's not just that, because we're losing the four hundred.
Yeah.
Thousand from the state to, for the catch-up on the motor vehicle taxes that we had last year.
Because that's paid in arrears.
And.
But that's the only reason we got it last year, is it.
It was.
Went down, but we still got the last year. Got a new policy where, if at all possible, they don't return any surpluses, right? It's only if everything else fails, then they have to give a little bit back.
No, they don't have to give anything.
Region schools are not obligated to give it back.
Oh, but if they, if they run out of things, they don't give it back, but they take it off your payments for the next year, but.
It's a complicated.
Now they're allowed to keep uh, the, the general fund balance and a cap, or did they get rid of the capital fund?
They got, the, yes, the, the capital fund has now. Been required by state law to be for operating expenses overages.
So the existing capital fund went away, or it's grandfathered?
No, it was changed.
Okay.
The use was changed.
Now it's, now it's, it's basically a general fund balance they're allowed to uh, maintain.
It's not a ge, general fund, it's, it's an um, it's for shortages. Except I don't know how they're ever gonna do that, because they never have shortages.
But can they still do capital projects like that?
Yes, they can, and.
Out of those funds?
Yes, they verbally, uh, the board of it sort of agreed that that would be a very good thing to do. Is to continue to use it for um, for capital projects. At the very next meeting, somebody raised, can we access that fund for this theater group? Like, capital project, theater group, and, and there's nothing wrong with it. I mean, the theater group does amazing stuff, but. But I'm just, the, the thinking is not necessarily.
Yeah.
Going to hold that that's for capital projects. Actually, um, she told us that she thinks that. At Florida, for school twenty-seven, they'll be asking for a bondage.
Or.
Capital projects.
Okay.
But they can deal with like an HVAC unit or something out of there, out of the fund that.
Small ones, but they, they have a larger HVAC project, I guess, and then Bethany needs a roof.
My goodness, are you really, are you really sitting still that long? Oh my goodness. Okay. Oh, goodness. Okay, well, other than that, um, and that was just information I wanted to give you as a general FYI. Um so basically, we've come to the end of. Our agenda and may I have a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
Okay, at eight forty five, I will second that motion. Uh, thank you, everyone who attended, we are now adjourned.
This is totally.